All right, girls. Welcome to tonight's team call. Kate is going to lead us in a working session and kind of give you some tips and guidance as far as working in a power pocket or a power hour and making it fit your schedule. But before we dive into that, I wanted to share with you that next week, we originally had a a five day free challenge group on the schedule for the end of February. But we're going to change it up a little bit because some of you are on the board with a couple of success club points. And some of you are still working really, really hard to get on the board. So we want to help you do that. And we're going to do a flash sale for the end of the month. So we don't have all of the details completely ironed out quite yet. But the sale is going to be Wednesday through Saturday. So they have to purchase by Saturday evening. It'll probably be 8:00 PM and comment on the ring the bell post with their proof that they purchased, like their order confirmation or whatever, just like a screenshot of it. And and then they will qualify for the prizes. I'm going to work on the prizes a little bit. We'll probably do a couple gift cards. And then I have a couple really pretty rose gold cups. A couple of you got them for Christmas with your names on them. These don't have names on them, but I do have a couple of those. So we'll work on what the gifts are going to be to kind of be that incentive for them to get started instead of waiting until March or we know whatever the case may be. We can offer them the $10 off coupon on any of the packages that are 160 and above, I believe. We can't put them on like the completion packs that are 130. They that we can't use a $10 promo code for those. So they could potentially get the bundle and save, then get the $10 off coupon and qualify for the fun prizes and extras by purchasing before the end of the end of the month. Okay, so I've already purchased from Pixel and Hugh, the guide and the graphics that are going to make this happen. I will, for those of you who are going to help run this, I will get you into a chat. We will work on getting that together so that that way we can run the group smoothly together. And if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to hand it over to Kate and let her do her thing.
All right, guys, bear with me. I've got Gremlin sitting right next to me eating her dinner. So how we're gonna roll. Um, so we are tonight, it's just kind of like a power hour for you guys or a power 30 minutes rather. And I kind of wanted to share for a hot second a little bit about how I do things because I do do it a little bit different than what like Beachbody dictates on the tracker sheet. You know, all that dictates like, you know, spend 20 minutes engaging, spend 10 minutes inviting, you know, whatever that may be. For me personally, the only thing that I ever set a timer for to do for like 20 minutes at a time is straight engagement on posts and on likes, people's stories. And I typically will do like 10 or 20 minutes each day on Facebook as well as Instagram. I do those separately. The rest of it, I used to set timers, like to do invites, but I found that I just wasn't as I just wasn't as efficient. I would get like my brain works and I don't know, it's like I I'm a very functional, like maybe ADD person. I don't know. But like my brain's just all over the place. So for me, like setting a timer and getting invites out, like I would just hit tangent after tangent. And I ended up losing a lot of time. So for me, and if this is you maybe, and you feel like you're, you know, you're setting the timer and you're just not, it's like, you know, 15 minutes goes by and you've only sent out three invites. Maybe instead, what you do is even that's okay. Okay, she better come. This is my life, you guys. For me, what I do instead is that I will set a number that I'm going to invite. So like when I first started out, it was like, I'm going to sit down. When I sit down to do invites, I'm going to send, I'm going to send out five invites. Or if I'm going to do my follow ups, I'm going to set that I'm going to do five follow ups. And like, that's what I would do. And like if I was going to send out like messages to just random people, I hadn't connected with you, I just wishing them a good day. I'd be like, okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to send out like five to six of those messages. And that is how I started. And that for me is what helped me to build a foundation because it gave me more concrete and efficient numbers to work off of. And then over time, I knew the kind of time that it took to do those. And then I could just build from there. So if you're somebody who's getting your wheels turned with the times, maybe give that a try. And I also really suggest putting your blinders on. For me, like if when I'm going to send out those five invites, that's all that I do. I just send invite after invite after invite. If a customer sends me a text or a message, I'm not going to open that up. I don't even open up a response to an invite. Like if I invite somebody, they immediately come back. I don't even look at it until I get the rest of my invites out. Otherwise, I'll open that message. They'll have questions. I'll get going back and forth with questions there. This customer has questions, I'll answer their stuff and then oh, F. And then again, like if I had the timer set, it's like, oh, my time's up and I'm I'm all over the place. So for me, that has helped immensely. And then as far as for the remainder of this time, I wanted to, you know, we're all focusing on working towards hitting Emerald. Even us coaches that already are Emerald, I mean, the whole point. I mean, my goal personally, which total transparency alert, February has been challenging for me. So but my weekly goal for myself is to hit Emerald. Like that is what is on my weekly to do's each week is to hit Emerald. And like for you just starting out, maybe it's that you're just going to hit Emerald each month. But that's again, we've talked about this before, you know, that's the foundation of our business is just consistently hitting Emerald. So to me, it's so much easier mindset wise to have that goal in mind versus like, oh, I need to hit Diamond by such and such time or I need to hit one star by such and such time. It's like, I see you hit that, I just need to hit Emerald again and again and again. So obviously, we had our push to Emerald call last. Well, that was just yesterday. I don't know where the days are going. So last night, we had a push to Emerald call. And then we obviously have a co, a what is coaching call tomorrow night that I think most of us here are going to be speaking on. So that's fun. So tonight, I thought what we could do is if you were on the call last night or if you got a chance to listen to the caller, maybe you didn't because life is crazy. We brainstormed the people that we were going to invite to this call. And we we challenged everyone to to have at least five names on a list. So if you haven't already done that, or if you want to create another, maybe get excited and create another list of at least five people, I vote, I want to do that with you all tonight. And then I also want to craft, I want to take some time to craft that post, that invite for them. Because if we haven't invited them yet, we want to go ahead and do that tonight just to get a bug in their ear. And then I also think that it's important to engage those people that you're inviting. I think that it's important to engage in their posts or their stories either tonight or tomorrow. I would much rather do that, like send out the invite and put that bug in their ear and then go love on them. And for me, it just because we love on them. And then the way the algorithms typically work with social media is then they're going to start seeing our posts. So like if you're, you know, you send an invite to them tonight, you maybe go and, you know, comment on a post that they did or a story that they did. They get on social media tomorrow morning. They see your morning posts, which should have something to do with the call tonight or tomorrow night. And then it just kind of goes from there. So I don't know if we want to set timers to do all of this or if we want to. Again, what I'd like to do is get in mind who you're going to invite, craft a post. We'll invite that, we'll get those invites sent out tonight and then we'll love on those people tonight. So that's what I would like to do for the remainder of, we've got 20 minutes here to get started. And then two, I thought this is also a good time as you're working. If you have questions on, you know, crafting an invite or what to say, or maybe you've got like somebody with a specific situation that you're not sure how to approach them. Please feel free to unmute yourself and let us know. Because I mean, we all have different tidbits on how to go about doing that. So does that sound good? Yeah, okay. So I will set a timer for, what is it, 7:40? So I'll set a timer for 20 minutes. And then we will just get work done, guys. At least I'm going to try to with this crazy child. I'm going to mute myself so you don't hear Elsa singing. At least I'm gonna try to with this crazy child, I'm gonna mute myself so you don't hear Elsa singing. Okay. It goes by super fast, it feels like. So, hopefully that helped a little bit. Um, and something I left out too. Especially with those that you have a good connection with and like for sure with my clients, you know, that I talk to on more of a regular basis. I'll send them a voice message to invite them to a coach call. It sounds a little bit more personable. And at least for me, I can get out a thirty to forty-five second voice message a heck of a lot faster than I can typing it out. So like with somebody, like I have a few girls that I literally invite them to these each month, because they're just, they're interested, but they're not quite there. I literally will send a voice message saying, hey, we've got another call coming up, do you want me to get you in so you can listen to this, or would you like the recording? So, it doesn't always have to be like, super formal. And we don't have to put so much thought into it when you do have those relationships that you have built more into. So. That's just my super thoughts. But otherwise, I hope this was helpful. I feel like it was kinda thrown together, but sometimes it's just how. This life goes, so.
I thought it was great. It's good perspective to just have a little bit of insight and do things differently. So, thank you very much for hosting. And teaching us your ways.
Oh yeah, my scatterbrain ways.
Gotta get, get the job done somehow, right?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So.
See, but I love hearing how other people do it, because it's a whole different perspective.
Well, and it's fun to like grab, like for me personally, I love being able to just grab from other people. Cause I don't know who, I don't remember who I heard it from, that they're like, well, I just said a number and that's like what I invite or who I connect with. I'm like. I need that in my life, because this whole like twenty minute timer is not, it's not working for me. Especially when you're doing it with kids.
No, that's awesome.
Thank you.
All right, girls. Well, we will see you hopefully tomorrow night at the coaching call. And, um, yeah, if you have any questions, let us know. I will get the recording up, um, probably tomorrow morning. So we'll talk with you tomorrow.